Welcome everyone to the September 23rd, 2021, meeting of the Pleasanton Unified School District's Board of Trustees. Please join me and rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So tonight, we are reconvening and I'm welcoming our folks, and I promised tonight I'm going to get everyone correct tonight. So this is one of our last meetings under the old rules of virtual meetings, and I'll talk a little bit at the end about how that's going to change, possibly in October. But first, I'd like to welcome everybody. To my right is Dr. David Haglund, he's the Superintendent of Schools. My name is Joan Larson and I am currently serving as the Board President. To my left is Trustee Mark Miller, he's serving as the Vice President this year. Then we have Trustee Steve Maher. Our new elected student board member, Saachi Bayani. We have our trustee Kelly Makashi, trustee Mary Jo Karyan. And joining us in the room tonight, we have Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, Dr. Janelle Woodward. Assistant Superintendent of Student Support Services, Mr. Ed Diolazzo. Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, Mr. Julio Hernandez. Mr. Ahmed Shikol Osami is our Assistant Superintendent of Business Services. And Patrick Gannon, who is our Coordinator of Communication and Community Engagement. Just a comment for those of you who are tuning in for the first time this year. This is our, we've had student board members on our board before, but they were on a rotating basis, and this is our first year with an elected student board member, who was elected by her peers at both high schools. In addition to her service on the board, where she will be voting on items to express the student voice that we really do appreciate hearing. Just so, just so the community is aware, it's a preferential vote and does not account in our quorum vote. But we do really value the, the voice of the students and her representation. And then we'll continue to have students who are rotating from the high schools, representing and giving reports from the different high schools. And tonight, we have Courtney Farmer from Village High School, who will be speaking with us tonight. So I have no action to report out of closed session. So I'll seek a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll move approval of the agenda.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. I'm going to call, I'm going to call for the votes again tonight. Trustee Karyan?
Aye.
Makashi?
Aye.
Bayani?
Aye.
Maher?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Larson, aye. All right. We do not have any recognitions for this meeting. I'm looking forward to October, however, when we will be, have a chance to have some of those recognitions that come forward from our teachers. So we'll move on to item number seven, which is representatives from our labor associations may address the board. And first up tonight, we have the California School Employees Association. Is the President, Mr. Derek Passaros, with us? Mr. Gannon, do you see Mr. Passaros?
I do not, President Larson.
All right, well, I'm going to go ahead and move on to the Association of Pleasanton Teachers, and when he's available, just let me know and we'll, we'll circle back. So President Michelle Verkylin of the Association of Pleasanton Teachers, are you with us tonight?
I am.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, President Larson, members of the board, Dr. Haglund, members of the Cabinet, and our community. I am Michelle Verkylin, President of the Association of Pleasanton Teachers. Sorry, if you can give me one minute, I'm having a little glitch here. Thank you. Okay. Best resources and supports, best class sizes, best educators. These are the guiding principles of the Association of Pleasanton Teachers, because our students deserve the best. I have exciting news this evening. I'd like to announce the launch of our Tri-Valley Educators Collaborative. The members of the Association of Pleasanton Teachers, Dublin Teachers Association, and San Ramon Valley Educators Association have joined together to work on our commitment to students. We are committed to gaining the supports and class sizes as well as attracting and retaining the educators our students deserve. We ask our entire community to join us in this commitment by signing on at bit.ly forward slash capital T V E support our students. Again, that's bit.ly forward slash capital T V E support our students. APT members will always advocate on behalf of our students. And in doing so, we ask that our school board invest in our highly qualified educators, the best resources and supports, and the best class sizes. We need to be able to attract and retain our educators, because our students deserve a great place to learn with highly qualified educators. We need you to ensure educators have the resources, respect, and training to support our students by ensuring safety, social, emotional, and wellness supports, adequately funded schools, and fully staffed schools. Our students deserve more supports, like more counselors, social workers, and nurses. And our students deserve the smallest class sizes we can give them. We ask you to invest in these student-centered resources and not in management's budget. Let's put students first, because Pleasanton students deserve the best. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Mr. Gannon, is, has Derek joined us, or someone from CSCA?
I do not see him, President Larson.
All right. Well, like I said, if, if there's been a technical challenge and, and he wishes to join us at a later point, let me know. So I do not either see any public comment from the community. So on, for items not on our agenda this evening, so we will move on to our Village High School representative report. Mr. Farm, Courtney Farmer, are you available?
Yes, ma'am. All right. Uh, sorry, I'm so nervous. Okay. So, at Village right now, we got some cool stuff going on. We had Spirit Week this week, tomorrow's the last day, but uh, at the moment, we just have some, like, our schedule changed from last year, so that's pretty cool. I kind of like how we start at nine o'clock now versus eight thirty like before. I feel like all of us students are more awake, and it's kind of nice to have that. And then, we also have, on Thursdays, we have, it's called advisory, where you just have like this period where you could just take some time, catch up on work. Thursdays, we have two. We have one in the morning and one after run, where you can take time, catch up on your work, where we have some fun activities. For example, we had a Super Smash Bros. competition, that was super cool. We had basketball. We had board games, did some fun stuff like that. Right now in leadership, we're working on announcement videos, newsletters, spirit days, trying to get all that locked in for our students. I say "our" students, I am a student, anyway. In econ, we're working on some like family budgeting, and like how you can help with that. Oh my goodness, I sound so bad. Oh, anyway. And then history, we're working on studying the Revolutionary War, which is a topic I'm very interested in, I enjoy that. Civics, we have government structure that we're studying, the committees and whatnot, which they talk about some random things, like the price of milk. In art, we're working on transforming folding art. And then in ceramics, we have coil pots, which are surprisingly difficult. And then in English, we're working on poems and songs and how they make you feel, and you know, just things like that, the mood that they gave you. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Courtney. Are there, are there any questions from any of the trustees for Courtney? Yes, Saachi, go ahead.
Courtney, yes. So I was wondering, can you talk more about the Super Smash Bros. Tournament? That seems super interesting and cool.
And I'm actually going to ask you to speak up a little bit too, Courtney. We're having trouble hearing you in the room here.
Oh, my bad. So the Super Smash Bros. Tournament, we just had like a Nintendo Switch in the culinary room. And you go over there with Evan, our culinary teacher. And like, there was, I think there was like two controllers, maybe three. I didn't attend it, but I got some good feedback from everybody else around me. They had lots of fun with that, but you just played Super Smash Bros. on the projector and then, you know, whoever won, I don't think they got anything. I think it was just for a good time, you know, just to have some fun with your friends or whatever. But all my, all my friends that went, they were like, "It was so fun." And I was like, "That's awesome, like, I'm good. I'm, I'm happy for you for that one." But yeah.
Sounds like a great team-building event. Any other questions from the trustees? Thank you so much, Courtney, for that report. Sounds like Village has got a lot going on, and it's good to hear that the time change is working out really well for the students. With that, we'll move on to item number 10, our superintendent's report. Dr. Haglund.
Thank you, President Larson. First, I want to welcome our student board member, Saachi Bayani, to the dais for the first time, in person, so we're glad to have you here. Before I go on too much further, in fact, in my report, I'm going to turn the mic over to Saachi, who has something to say to the students in the district.
Hello, my fellow students and parents. I know mostly parents are watching this meeting. I want to tell you guys all about this new wonderful trend called Devious Lick, where students steal things from the school. Let me tell you the effects of what Devious Lick has done to our schools. The bathrooms are now closed during most of the time. Another thing is only one person can go to the bathroom at the same time. This has a lot of unintended consequences. For example, people got dehydrated on Monday because they were afraid to drink water, because they didn't want to use the restroom when it was closed. Another thing, people have to hold their, people have to hold it in, because only one person can go to the bathroom at a time. This isn't a fun trend. People are getting harmed. Our poor janitors have to disinfect the classrooms because of COVID and now have to deal with all of this mess. Like, if you guys want to have some fun at the schools, I get it. You know what you could do? You can tie a rubber ducky to every single door handle, tie a helium balloon to every single door handle. Don't do things that harm people. It's not worth it. So let's stop with the Devious Lick trend and start with the Angelic Yield trend. Thank you.
Thank you, Saachi. I appreciate your support on that.
Here, here.
So tomorrow, Amador Valley and Foothill High School football teams will face off in the annual crosstown rivalry game. The varsity game will begin at 7:00 PM and will be broadcast live by our partners at Tri-Valley TV on Channel 30. Of course, you can always come at 4:30 and watch the JV game if you, if you're available. And also, prior to that game, at 7:00 o'clock, Amador Valley will host their annual Pigskin Festival, which does start also at 4:30, like the JV game. Our high schools have been working hard to host events in a manner that is safe for the community to enjoy. I look forward to cheering from both, for both teams on the sidelines and invite everyone to come and show their support. Our ability to host these events on our campuses is reliant upon the care and compliance of each member of our school community. We cannot afford to take our ability to gather as a community for granted. Each of us is responsible for our own actions, and we do well to remember that our choices affect those around us, as Saachi talked about just a second ago, for better or worse. I hope tomorrow and the coming days and weeks, that the better angels of our nature will be demonstrated by our students, by our school communities, and by each one of us individually. And that's my report for tonight.
Thank you. Yes, I too have been disturbed by, this is not in keeping, this, I don't even want to call it a game, it's not in keeping with our, what we've been teaching our students and, and hoping that they're going to go out and make a better world, and this is not doing that, for sure. So consent agenda is our next item on, up. And I do have one item that has been pulled by the HR department. So item number C is the Speech Language Pathology Assistant job description has been pulled, but the job description for the school psychologist intern remains for, on, on consent. Is there any other consent item, any other trustee wishes to pull to discuss or vote separately on? All right, then with that, I'll seek a motion to approve the consent agenda with the amendment to item C.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent and agenda, except for the amendment of item C.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda without the Speech Language Pathology Assistant. Trustee Karyan?
Aye.
Makashi?
Aye.
Bayani?
Aye.
Maher?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
And Larson, aye. Great, thank you very much. Onto item number 12, which is our section of report discussion and possible action on these items. And the, whoops, did I miss something? And the first item up on that is report discussion and possible action on, for our board objectives for the 2122 organizational work plan. Dr. Haglund.
So thank you. We, we, in August, on the 23rd, we met and discussed objectives and related action items that could be incorporated in the organizational work plan on behalf of the board of trustees, which kind of finishes up our systems alignment by incorporating the governance team into that, that goals document. So over the past couple of weeks, we've been looking at drafts of those. Patrick, if you could put them up, I'd appreciate it. Shared the drafts of the, the notes that were massaged into objectives and shared with each of the board members for the opportunity to provide feedback. And there were a couple of pieces of feedback that I wanted to make sure we highlighted today in our conversation. In this document, you'll note that those, those additions were in kind of a purple color. The first one coming in Goal Two, in Objective Two, monitoring district efforts with regards to contact tracing and testing protocols. That was a recommendation we incorporated. The next recommendation we incorporated came in Goal Three, in Objective One, in the metrics. And that's the trustee area elections as per board direction. So it's, the board still has work to do to give direction to the staff. So we will, whatever we are directed to by the board, you will help support. We'll be able to see whether or not that occurred. In Objective Number Two, also in the key performance indicators, there was a request to, to add the CCEIS designated data tracking to the metrics that we look at with regards to that objective. In Goal Four, under Objective One, there was a request at supporting the new teacher induction program through policy and budget action. So that's an action associated to that goal. And the rest were taken directly from the notes at the conversation. So if there's any desire to talk through any of these, we will have that conversation now. I'll take any input. And then I'm looking for a motion to approve these so that they can be incorporated into the document, which will be finalized before September 30th.
I just had a question about, in terms of the KPIs and the metrics. So how will the, I mean, we've talked in the past about doing a board evaluation, and we've never really gotten very far on it. Would the, would reports on these metrics be part of that evaluation that we would do at each meeting? Would it, so would we have a section on our agenda that we'd like to change to include these metrics?
Yeah, so I, the way I would recommend that it be done, much like the evaluation documents for the superintendent and for the assistant superintendents, these related goals and actions are what we are evaluating on. And so I would suggest that your board evaluation, your conversation, is directly associated with this document that we're looking at right now.
Well, then I do think we need to change the, to include, as opposed to just board reports and action items on the agenda, we would have a section where we would, of that nature. If there were things to report, so that we would be documenting them. So we would, in addition to things that you say might be bringing forward from, say, city liaison, that you need the whole board to know, there might be something that, that would pertain to these things that would need to be reported out, and that would be the time and place to, for us to document that. Unless there is a work product coming out of whatever that metric is, you know, at some future date. So, so yeah, I think we'll, it'll be a little bit of a work in progress as we, as we move forward. Are there other questions or comments about the objectives?
So Dr. Haglund, on Goal Five, Objective One, the action steps, aren't there any specific action steps to help strengthen the connection the board has with the student body?
On Goal Five?
Objective One.
Objective One. So the, there, the, the action steps, the things that, the specific things they would do are outlined in that center column. So that box has three bullets. They're intentionally broad in the way that they're written, but we'll be looking at active participation in town halls and other community meetings. We'll be developing policies and procedures that ensure that there's a single voice that's being communicated out by the board. And then there was also a request by the trustees to have a dedicated staff person that could help with the communication to the community, which would include the students.
Thank you.
That was the part, only one on here that I, I don't know if I'm 100% behind. I think we do need somebody to do, you know, to coordinate our communications, but I don't want to hire a whole FTE or something to do that. So maybe it's just the wording of, you know, leveraging somebody who's already here or whatever, but that, that's, I don't know. I don't know that's a full-time job in my mind.
Other comments?
So I do agree with trustee Miller. Hopefully, that can be, you know, not necessarily new hire. So I don't know if that needs to just be adapted in terms of job responsibility. But, oh, I'm sorry.
Like, name a dedicated rather than?
Yeah, yeah, just like a minor adjustment to that. And I just wanted to go back on what was just mentioned earlier on the Goal Five, on the communication with the student body piece. Saachi, I think that's a really good point. I know Dr. Haglund and I had had a conversation and maybe just adding a little bit of language that when we talk about community engagement, it's a two-way reciprocal process. It's not just the board engaging in with the community or with stakeholders, but also the, the dialogue back. And so I'm not really sure, Saachi, if you're thinking of more of like engagement activities where board members are engaging with the student body, but I think that's a brilliant idea to hear from the student voice. So maybe just, maybe that's under an action step or, you know, something that could be tweaked. But I think that's a great idea to really engage with that dialogue process.
What were, what was, what were you thinking when you brought that up? What kind of engagement would you be interested in?
I was really interested in seeing the board members more around campus. I knew, I do know that you guys are around campus, but personally, I have not seen anyone at the campus besides Dr. Haglund and Dr. Woodward. I like to see like the board members just like maybe sit in a classroom or just do an activity, like, for example, if there's like a physics lab or something, one of the board members does the physics lab, physics lab with us, and just talks to students like one-on-one, like in the physics lab, or like any activities that a school is generally having. Like, I know PE always has a lot of fun activities. It'd be pretty fun to see one of you guys throwing a football with some of the people. Maybe not football, whatever sport there is.
Well, so didn't we have an item on here that was around us engaging at the sites?
There is visiting their school sites.
Yeah, and I think probably the, there are, when you look at the executive cabinet's evaluations, they're much more comprehensive than the objectives that they put into this document. This document would be 800 pages if we listed all of the things that we are going to do. So in that Goal Number Five, the second objective speaks directly to students, right? And then if you look all the way over to the right into the metrics that we'll be looking at, one of the items is trustee calendars. And so we'll be watching to see if trustees are actually going out to the school sites and, and visiting with students. And so I think it's there, if, if you know what I mean. But it's not specifically stated, because we can't specifically state everything we want everybody to do. So I'm open to wording changes if, if the board directs that to happen. But I also want to make sure everybody knows that this is, these are broad statements, and will be backed up by lots of data sources.
Anyone else?
So I don't know if it really needs to be adjusted in the language, but I do think that it's important that, that we keep in mind for the Objective Two, that the communication strategies are two-way and reciprocal. And I really appreciate Saachi's, your comment about more engagement in with the student body and onsite. And I just wanted to thank Dr. Haglund for facilitating, and the team to facilitate the process with, with engaging the board, with our own accountability and actions around the district goals. So thank you.
I love your idea, and so I would love to be invited anytime, because I have more time. I think we have some people that work. And I think we talked about sharing, you know, regular visiting schools. So, you know, if you have an invitation for something, you know, just do it to all the board members and see who can come.
All right, so I'm hearing that we would be not, although we do definitely want help with communication strategies, we're not, at this point, looking to hire a dedicated confidential staff member. And we would like to see if there's an opportunity to work more closely with a staff member. I know everybody has full-time jobs already. But if that's possible, maybe that can just be a goal for this time to start to develop a process, and we can visit that as we go along, if that sounds like something reasonable. And also, understanding that we're looking to, you know, get more involved on the school sites and have a little bit more visibility, and we'll be able to document it that way. And I think I captured the others. Is that correct? Everybody's okay?
I'm trying to find where that person was.
A Goal Five, both in the, in one and two.
So for right now, I'm going to draw a line through that?
Okay.
If that's the desire of the board. One of the, one of the, just so we can revisit the conversation, if and when you choose to, there was a conversation about having all communication come to one of the board members be, so calendars and whatnot. That was part of the purpose of having that person there, because they will be setting up your calendars, they will be working with your email communication as a board. So if we're not, if we don't have a dedicated person to do that, I don't know that we will be able to do all of those.
I'm aware of that. I, I'm not really wanting to throw it out. I think that the ideas, you know, perhaps, like I said, moving toward that is, you know, is doable, you know, in, starting with some baby steps. As to whether or not we ultimately, I mean, lots of districts have assistance to the board themselves, not just to the superintendent. And I'm not sure that we're, we need that or we're ready to do that, but we definitely, there is the volume of communication that the board receives. And again, organizing, making sure that we're all on the same page for invitations and calendar things and all of that kind of work, you know, would be helpful in addition to sort of redesigning the way our website works with communication with the trustees. So I'd like to somehow move in that direction.
So what I've got now, I'm sorry to be typing and listening at the same time, but I've got consider dedicated confidential staffing to support board communications and appointments. So, and it's, not everybody understands the, the need for the confidential, the person has to be a confidential employee, because they're dealing with board issues. It can't just be, "Oh, we've got somebody over here who's got some time."
That's correct.
It really needs to be a confidential employee. Otherwise, I don't know that you want them to have access to your calendar and, and all that kind of stuff. So that's the issue that I'm trying to navigate with you.
Correct.
But I like the wording of that. I mean, just to make my thinking transparent, is, I don't, it's not that I don't think we have a need, I just don't know that it's a whole person, you know, doing that. So that's, so maybe it's- So, maybe it's, as we consider it, it's sort of, let's come up with a description. What would the tasks be? That, to your point, that's the baby step of like, what would this look? Oh, it's on.
Is it on? Oh, there.
What would it?
All right.
What would it look like? And then, is that one or part, you know, anyway, so.
Well, hearing your input, we've changed the wording on this, and we'll come back to you potentially with an alternative solution that tries to get to the same end.
All right. With that, how are we feeling about it? Are we ready to adopt our first-ever organizational work plan for the Board of Trustees? All right, I'll seek a motion.
Can I make a motion to approve our first-ever organizational?
All right. It's been moved and seconded to adopt the 21-22 organizational work plan for the Board of Trustees, as amended. Trustee Karyon?
Aye.
Makashi?
Aye.
Bayani?
Aye.
Maher?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
And Larson? Hi, thank you. Fabulous. Let's, we have to start to work right now. All right. Item number B, report discussion and possible action on the Resolution 2021-2022.08, recognizing the week of the administrator. Am I hitting this one off, or are you, Dr. Hagland?
I can start it.
You can start it. All right. Thank you very much, Dr. Woodward.
Sure. Good evening, President Larson, trustees, Superintendent Hagland, Cabinet, and Pleasanton Community. We know that great schools are led by great administrators, and research has repeatedly shown that quality school leadership is essential to student success. Those leaders in turn are supported by a network of talented and dedicated professionals that work in various capacities. As the state's preeminent professional association for education leaders, AXA, which stands for Association of California School Administrators, has long since promoted the importance of school leadership in our public school system. We know that in Pleasanton, our leadership team works tirelessly and collaboratively with their certificated and classified staff members and parents, students, and guardians to support students and their families. We salute our administrators in PUSD, and we are confident that with their unwavering support and hard work, our students and our schools will continue to excel to new levels, and we together will make our world a better place. And so, we bring to the trustees this evening the resolution to celebrate the week of the administrator on October 10th through the 6th, 2021, in order to honor our hard-working and dedicated administrators.
Well, as is our custom, when we're doing resolutions in recognition, we like to read them aloud. Would you like to start, Dr. Hagland?
I will start. So, Sachi, it's going to come this way, so be ready, and then we'll go around through here and come back again.
Do you have a copy of the resolution? Perfect.
Perfect. Here we go. Whereas leadership matters for California public education system and the more than 6 million students it serves.
Whereas school administrators are passionate lifelong learners who believe in the value of quality public education, and?
Whereas the title "school administrator" is a broad term used to define many education leadership posts. Superintendents, assistant superintendents, principals, assistant principals, special education and adult education leaders, curriculum and assessment leaders, school business officials, classified educational leaders, and other school district employees are considered administrators, and?
Whereas providing quality service for student success is paramount for the profession, and?
Whereas most schools' administrators began their careers as teachers, the average administrator has served in public education for more than a decade. Most of California's superintendents have served in education for more than 20 years. Such experience is beneficial in their work to effectively and efficiently lead public education and improve student achievement, and?
Whereas public schools operate with lean management systems across the nation, public schools employ fewer managers and supervisors than most public and private sector industries, including transportation, food services, manufacturing, utilities, construction, publishing, and public administration, and?
Whereas school leaders depend on a network of support from schools' communities, fellow administrators, teachers, parents, students, businesses, community members, board trustees, colleges and universities, community and faith-based organizations, elected officials, and district and county staff and resources to promote ongoing student achievement and school success, and?
Whereas research shows great schools are led by great principals and great districts are led by great superintendents. These site leaders are supported by extensive administrative networks throughout the state, and?
Whereas the state of California has declared the second full week of October as the week of the school administrator in Education Code 44015.1, and?
Whereas the future of California's public education system depends upon the quality of its leadership, now therefore?
Be it resolved by the Pleasanton Unified School District that all school leaders be commended for their contribution they make to successful student achievement.
Thank you. I do like that very much, reading it out loud. So, are there any questions regarding this resolution from the trustees? Trustee Karyon?
I just have a comment, and I just want to say that it's always been a really hard job to be an administrator, but right now with COVID, the fact that they have to call parents, that there's, I mean, that takes 20 to 30 minutes for each phone call. They're just working really, really hard, and I just want to say thank you for caring and supporting our students so very well. We just really appreciate it.
Sachi?
I would also like to thank our ministers at the school sites because they do a lot. I have received a lot of emails from my principals and vice principals at ridiculously late times, which is quite scary, but it shows that they truly are working hard. It's great that there's actually a week to recognize all the hard work.
All right. I second those comments as well. With that, I'll seek a motion to approve Resolution 2021-2022.08.
I'll make a motion to approve the Resolution 2021-2022, recognize the week of the administrator, October 10th through the 16th, 2021.
I'll second it.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2021-2022.08, recognizing the week of the administrator, October 10th through the 16th, 2021. Trustee Karyon?
Aye.
Makashi?
Aye.
Bayani?
Aye.
Maher?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
And Larson? Aye. I guess we can't, still can't hug an administrator, but if you can and you're on campus or you have an opportunity, please thank them for their service. It's highly, highly appreciated. Onto item number C, report and discussion on the 2021 summer programs. Is that also Dr. Woodward introducing? Oh, sorry. Thank you, Mr. DiLazzo.
Yes, thank you. I can introduce this one. Thank you. Good evening, President Larson, Dr. Hagland, Board of Trustees, Cabinet Staff and Community. So, before I use item Roman numeral 12. C, and this is a report and discussion item, so it's an information item on our 2021 summer programs, and it was a very unique summer, this past summer, but we are very excited to talk about our programs. And I have our Director of Educational Options, Ms. Heather Pereira, who will talk about and present the information. And just briefly, the summer programs consist of our summer school programs for our elementary, middle, and high school students, our extended school year program for our students with IEPs or Individualized Education Plans, and then also our enrichment courses and practice and extend programs. And those programs were new this year, as I mentioned. So, at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Heather Pereira.
Hi, good evening, Superintendent Hagland, President Larson, Board of Trustees, and Sachi. So excited to see you there. Good evening. I'd like to introduce my colleagues here. We are the summer programs team, just a part of the team. Obviously, there's lots more folks that aren't going to be presenting tonight, but tonight we have Mr. Jamie Mather, Mr. Elias Muniz, and Ms. Terry Conde with us. And Mr. Mather's going to share his screen so that you can see some of the data as we talk about what happened in summer programs this year. So, thank you. If you could go to the next slide, please. All right, so just a quick mission statement. You know, this has been our mission statement in summer programs for a number of years, but just quickly to reiterate, it's our mission to ensure that all students acquire the knowledge and skills essential to achieving their full potential and to become productive citizens. We really feel like the summer program is a critical piece of making sure that students receive all of the assistance they need.
Thank you, Heather. I'll jump in here. So, in summer programs in the last school year, last summer, we sort of had three buckets of programs that we like to talk about. So, we had our general education summer school, our extended school year, as Mr. DiLazzo said, for students with IEPs, and our brand-new practice and extend program for students to practice and extend their skills that they learned during the school year. And I do want to make a point that the general education summer school particularly is another example of the multiple Tier Two interventions that we have within Pleasanton Unified, and it is one of the largest of those Tier Two interventions, serving over 1,000 students over the course of the summer. In addition, this year, we were in-person. So, last year, in 2020, we were fully remote. However, this year, we brought students back in-person, and for many of them, this was their first time being on a school campus since March of 2020. To prepare for that, we engaged with the community and our parent and family communities in a variety of ways. We had a parent webinar that was held on June 3rd of 2021, and more familiarized parents with the program and what to expect. We had our parent hub that was signatures and our emails for various resources about what our program was going to look like and how it was structured. We had a full-time social worker who was engaged with families, with phone calls home to high school students who are behind in classes at regular intervals. We definitely wanted to make sure that since this was somewhat of a novel experience for a lot of our students, that we were communicating with the families as well. And with that, I would like to turn over to Ms. Terry Conde, who's the principal of our high school program.
Thank you, Mr. Mather. Good evening, everyone. So, now we're going to talk specifically about the high school credit recovery for students who made up Ds and Fs and NCs from last year. Our program was a two, three-week session. Students completed courses that earn NCs, CRs, Ds, and Fs during the school year. Each session, students could make up to two courses for a total of four courses throughout the summer session, and we utilized temporary grading policy from the second semester of 2021 school year. Little bit about the curriculum. We use the Edgenuity Courseware courses, which are designed to help the students meet the rigor of common core state standards and ensure subject area mastery. These courses are A through G-approved and are aligned with our PUSD curriculum. Our teachers were able to differentiate the curriculum through Edgenuity Course Customization tools, and I'll give you a couple examples. They were able to rearrange the subject matter or create their own activities or create modules that were for competency-based learning. And in addition to Edgenuity, our teachers supplemented their instruction with other PUSD-approved curriculum in order to keep the classes engaging and enriching since we were in-person. Okay, for our highlights, you'll notice on the left side, there were 501 students enrolled in our summer school program, which is slightly less than the previous year. However, 1,181 courses were taken compared to the 716 courses the year prior. We also saw a substantial increase in our passage rate. In 2020, 86% of all courses were passed, but in 2021, 94.2% of all courses were passed. We attribute this positive increase to the use of self, and you'll see at the bottom, self-paced curriculum, in-person format, and then teacher focus on differentiation, strong support staff, and then the temporary grading policy. Looking at the graph, you'll also see that 25% of the courses taken were English, followed by math and social studies. The grade distribution, hard work, between the two sessions were largely similar, with approximately 34% As and about 6% no credit. And then the high school origin, plurality of our students are from Foothill High School, and the large majority are from our two comprehensive high schools. And back to Jamie.
So, we do want to talk about the demographic considerations of summer school and high school. I want to make the point that in high school summer school, we successfully served a disproportionately high level of traditionally marginalized students, and you see the overrepresentation of Latinx students, of African-American students, socioeconomically disadvantaged students, and of emerging bilingual students. Though not traditionally marginalized, we also see an overrepresentation of males in our PUSD high school summer school, and this is something that we've seen in the last few years, and we continue to track this data. In addition, 46.8% of our high school students over the course of the summer were students that had stayed remote during the 2020-2021 school year. So, almost half of our students were walking onto a campus for the first time since March of 2020. And Terry, if you want to take it away with middle school intervention? You're on mute, Ms. Conde.
Okay. For middle school intervention, I'm sorry, we're going to talk specifically to our program grades six through eight. This was a skills-based intervention program that included our English Language Arts and Mathematics. We had a total of 256 courses taken total, and we served 128 students that were identified at the middle school level by CR and C grades and teacher counselor referrals. Each student participated in individualized MyPath courses designed by the Edgenuity program based off of the diagnostic tests. On a daily basis, students combined, completed curriculum in Edgenuity MyPath and participated in classroom lessons designed and delivered by their teachers. The MyPath program is through our Edgenuity remediation. It looks at the skills, the gaps in the student's skills by meeting the needs of their learning with different levels, differentiated age level, appropriate instruction. And then the middle school students participate in both MyPath while being supported by the summer school teachers in the classroom. Okay, so for the origin, again, plurality came from PMS, and the least amount came from Hart Middle School. Back to Jamie.
So, similar to high school, we're seeing similar trends sort of throughout our summer, our Gen Ed summer school programs, but our middle school summer school also were able to successfully serve disproportionately high levels of traditionally marginalized students, but even more skewed a little bit. So, we saw our Latinx population being a little bit more disproportionately represented. Same thing with our African-American population and socioeconomically disadvantaged and emerging bilingual. That being said, unlike in previous years and in high school, there was not an overrepresentation of students who identified as male. So, that's a good thing, but we definitely are aware of the demographics that we're serving in our secondary high school programs. In addition, at the secondary level, we sent out some surveys. We wanted to know how our students felt, how our parents felt about their experience, especially this year being sort of a unique one, probably in a lot of the history of public education, with students coming back in-person for their first time in a year. And so, we asked if, we asked how they felt about their experience with the class and course instruction. And so we asked if, we asked how they felt about their experience with the class and course instruction. It was largely positive. Certainly, we always try to improve and address issues as they arise, but it was largely positive. So we're pretty happy about that. Of the responses, granted, there were only 39 out of the 501 students, but of the responses, the majority felt that their students were more prepared entering the next grade in the fall. And then I showed some quantitative data, but I also wanted to show some of what parents said. I'm not going to read all of this, but I would like to give the shout-out to Ms. Conde as there was some specific feedback for her, that she was very helpful and responsive towards needs. And now I'll pass off to Mr. Elias Muniz, who was the summer school principal.
Good evening, and thank you, Mr. Mayther. Next slide, please. Wonderful. So at the elementary level, we were able to provide interventions in math, English language arts, and English language development. We were also able to provide two Spanish dual-language classes. The identification process, obviously, it was teacher and intervention specialist referrals. And obviously, we based those referrals on student assessments. During summer school, we were also able to provide our PVIS curriculum to our students and adopted the school's rules to be able to obviously create an environment that was conducive to learning. At the elementary level, largely, the number of students that attended summer school were from Valley View, Donglin, and Fairlands. Similarly, the middle school and high school, as you can see based on the data, we did also serve a disproportionately high level of traditionally marginalized students. Our Hispanic Latinx students, our Black African-American students, and our emerging bilinguals, which I believe is slightly higher than at the middle school and high school. All right, some of the curriculum that we were able to provide our teachers and students. Obviously, in English language arts, in grades K through second grade, we were able to utilize 95% in third through fifth grade units of study. We were able to provide them with leveled reading books, read aloud mentor texts, and then math. Teachers were able to pilot the Number World Math Intervention Program, which we received really good feedback. And for the English Language Development Curriculum, they were able to use EL achieve. Mr. Mayther?
And I'll talk a little bit here about the program supports and student engagement. Because I think this was a really special part of POSD summer school this year and in previous years. We had an amazing support team. It wasn't just the administrators and the teachers. We had everybody from social worker, counselor, parent liaisons working a lot of the time, school nurse. All of these people were integral to the success of the program. So we have our PVIS system, or Positive Behavior Intervention and Support System. And this was run by the summer school social worker, Elise Greenway. She did a phenomenal job. Administration and teachers, where students could earn RISE rewards, and RISE stood for Respect, Integrity, Safety, and Excellence. And they could, they would get these little tickets, and on Fridays, they could redeem those tickets for all sorts of stuff. But popsicles were very popular because it's hot out, because it's summer. We had our social worker, again, Elise Greenway, who, over the course of the summer, had 70 unique student contacts. 50 of those were ongoing, regular meetings over the six weeks. Our counselor, Ms. Jen Friesen, had 344 unique student and parent contacts, and then met with students to make sure that schedules were accurate and to provide emotional support as needed. Our parent liaisons did a phenomenal job working with us to call families for attendance and for intervention. And then our school nurse was able to really help our students, both in terms of COVID protocols and also in just not feeling very good day-to-day, which can happen. Ms. Conde will talk about ESY, or Extended School Year.
Okay, so I, you know, we had a few bumps at the beginning of our ESY program, but we were able to persevere and I thought had a successful ESY program. This program is actually different than the traditional school year in terms of its purpose. The regular school year, kids continually push forward in their progress based on their IEP goals. ESY is designed not for that constant pursuit of progress, but to cement the progress made in the regular school year through practice and reinforcement. So for the 21-22 school year, instruction can be moved forward from the get-go. So students had, also had an opportunity to work on daily living skills and/or community-based instruction. And we did have, some of our ESY classes actually do community-based instruction where they went to different sites like Safeway and things like that, so they can experience those community-based instruction skills. Next slide. So the ESY program is a seat-based program. The length of it was four weeks. During the time that we had our summer session, we provided services for 95 students in grades preschool through 12, 12, I would say 12-plus. We had, at the high school level, we had grades six through 12 at Amador's site, and students worked on progress on their goals, which our staff reported this information in SASE for follow-up for the following year. We had walk-in services. We had the dual-program enrollment. Student is not enrolled in another summer program, the dual enrollment, student is enrolled in a general education summer school program and services, and IEP provided during the summer. We had, I think overall, we were able to problem-solve some of the things and challenges that we had going on through our ESY program. So overall, it was successful. Jamie?
And then also, this year, we launched something called Practice and Extend, which was a program designed for students and any student within POSD to both practice some of the skills that they got during the school year and then also move beyond that and extend their skills. And so in total, 1,836 students registered to participate in Practice and Extend. The curriculum was through sort of a beta test of Edgenuity MyPath, and they worked in self-paced courses in ELA and math. The K5 were based in grade-level standards. So a student was going into second grade but was in first grade the year before, started in first grade, and they could move through the first-grade curriculum at their own pace. And then if they passed that, we would activate the second-grade curriculum that they could jump into. For grades six through 12, they had differentiated courses based off of their MAP scores, so that we would meet students where they were. We had three learning coaches. These coaches provided support through the Practice and Extend program through email, Zoom, three webinars a week on a variety of topics to help out students and parents. And then we also tried to implement some incentives in here, too. So any student that completed 120 minutes' worth of work a week were entered into a drawing for prizes. And so we had all sorts of great prizes that Ms. Pereira provided. And now I'll turn over to Ms. Pereira to talk about the HR data.
Thanks, Jamie. All right, so as you'll see on the next slide, one of our goals is to increase in district employees for all of our summer programs. You know, we know that our employees know our students best, so to provide that continuity of learning, we want in-district employees. And we've done really well over the past few years of making adjustments so that we can attract and retain POSD employees. So this data represents the, not students, the employees we had last year. So you'll see that our areas where it's still tough to get 100% in district are typically related to ESY and special education positions. Our general education positions, those are typically in hard-to-fill areas as well, math, sciences, ELD in elementary school, things like that. But we've made big improvements year over year in retaining our Pleasanton Unified School District employees, and we think that that's why we're making gains or contributing to why we're making gains in how our students are doing in summer school as well, because we can hit the ground running, because these are folks that know them. We also provided meal service for students in summer school. Breakfast and lunch were provided at no cost to all the students. The average meals provided per day were 80. Students typically received lunch at the end of the day. And so for our secondary students in particular, they do like to go off-campus and eat still, so we didn't see the highest participation there. But we did have student-stocked barbecues at the secondary level, too, during the entirety of the summer school, and those were well-attended, average of about 150 students each time, and it was just, it was cool. Kids had fun doing that.
And as a result of all this work over the summer, we do have some just key reflections. Our support staff were crucial to the success of having a large number of students on campus. Having school-site counselors schedule students, and this is at the secondary level, significantly decreased the amount of scheduling errors at the beginning of summer school, again, at the secondary level. Something that we'd probably like to do is hire an extra counselor for the first week of summer school on both secondary and elementary, and sort of in keeping with those reflections. We also know that Pleasanton Unified teachers and staff know our students and are well-equipped to serve them. For Extended School Year, we've already started this process, but we're going to work with site special ed departments to strengthen our identification and communication processes. We should hold an open house for seat-based ESY. We would like to further train our ELD staff to make our ELD programs more effective and continue to offer and expand our Spanish dual-language, dual-language classes at the elementary level. So these are things that we're going to work on over the course of this school year. And here's some key terms. That's the presentation.
Yeah, so thank you, everyone, for listening, and big thanks to this team and to the entire summer programs team. As you can see from our data and knowing our data year over year, you can see that as we continue to build in supports for students, we get better results. So we obviously are not, we're perfect yet where we want to be, but we're excited about the trajectory and obviously thrilled about working with our students. So thank you all, and we will take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Director Pereira. I do have a question for you. I didn't send this in advance, but I like the reflections page, but I'm wondering if you have given, and I'm sure you have much or any thought to what takeaways in terms of the additional engagement and improvement the students saw in the summer program that might be able to be applied to our regular programs to, you know, to help students not need summer school, for example? If there were things from the way you ran the summer school program that you could see us incorporating into our regular school year, what would those things might be?
I do. I can start, and then I'd love for the team to contribute their thoughts as well. Differentiation is really key, and we're able to do that because we use a learning management system in summer school. It also provides us with a way to really target the skills that each individual student is working on. And to do things that we know are just really best practices in education, but can be challenging without the right tools. So things like retesting. You know, we, we had teachers that would, you know, have a student take an exam, and then if they didn't pass that exam, there would be reteaching and then a retake of the exam. And the learning management system allowed the teachers the tools to be able to readily do that. They could provide practice exams for the students. And again, they could hone in on the concepts that the students were actually struggling with in a way that's a little bit more manageable than during a sort of traditional school year. Not that we couldn't, you know, do some of those things on a larger scale. And I do want to say that there is a lot of work in that area that's happening right now through our curriculum and instruction department to sort of help with that. That's just kind of one thing. I'll let the other folks talk about things that they've seen, but yeah, we've definitely had these conversations.
I would say another thing, and I touched upon it in the reflections page, but the support staff. Summer school, just because it is generally a smaller population of students than the comprehensive sites, whether it be the elementary or the middle school or high school sites. When we had a counselor, a social worker, five parent liaisons on campus, we had a lot of extra hands to help students when they needed it. So if a student left class because they're having a hard day, we had somebody who could talk to them. If there wasn't sort of a sensitive issue that an administrator had to handle, we would have the staff to reach out to families and ask what sort of supports they needed. And that was crucial to a huge number of our students. That being said, I'm also speaking primarily at the secondary level. If, Mr. Muniz, if you'd like to talk about elementary at all.
No, I think I would have to echo what my colleagues have said. What really stands out during summer school and something that we can learn from is, again, all the wraparound services that we're able to provide during summer school. Like Mr. Mayther said, we did have all hands on deck for the six weeks. And obviously, for the four weeks of ESY, we, like you said, and what you mentioned was, we had a lot of parent liaisons, social workers that worked with our families to ensure that they made it to school, and not only when they made it to school, but also kept them when we were successful and keeping them on campus. So just to echo what Mr. Mayther said.
So basically, the ratio of adults to students was important for the success of the students this summer. Sounds like.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, we did try to keep our class sizes smaller. We built in tutoring. You know, just really didn't give the students an option to not be successful. And to be able to do that, we needed to have a lot of people in place.
I really appreciate your answers to the questions. Any other trustees have questions? Mr. Maher?
Thank you. First of all, Heather, thank you very, very much to your team, to the teachers, administrators, social workers, and so forth, for the job well done. Do you know what percentage of students who could have benefited, benefited from summer school that did not enroll?
We don't have that information offhand. We do have, we can get it, because we're actually working with that population now to get them set up for additional supports, but we would have to compile that. We'll go ahead and send that to you all.
I would appreciate that, because it sounds like you guys are on the right track. And if we get more of our students who need that help, I think it would be a great benefit. Thank you.
I had a quick question.
Mr. Miller and then Ms. Bayani.
Oh, no, you go ahead.
Thank you. So my question was, is do you have any reasons why they're, I should say, males are overrepresented in summer school?
So important to note is this year, they were not overrepresented for the first time in a while. We have a number of hypotheses. It's not, it's not an unusual trend, and it's not a trend that's specific to POSD. But we don't have any real research that would highlight the precise reason here in Pleasanton Unified.
Thank you. Another question I had is, what was the overlap of summer school students who are Hispanic, Latinx, and ESL kids?
That's data that we don't have offhand, but that is something that we could, that we could pull as well. So as we're pulling the numbers for the students who were recommended for summer school but didn't take advantage of it, we'll find that data as well.
Mr. Miller first.
Yeah, great presentation, and thank you for another job well done. I just have a request, actually. I love the data in the, in the presentation on the numbers specifically, but I think it would be really cool next year if we could actually do a year-over-year comparison with the previous year, not just on numbers, like number of students and classes and stuff like that, which I do think is not just on numbers like number of students and classes and stuff like that, which I do think is interesting. But I'd love to see a reflection on the reflection. So you guys put in a bunch of things you learned this time. Be interesting to kind of look back and see, well, you know, did we, how did we do on taking advantage of those reflections and so forth? So it's just sort of a, you know, a sort of a, just a comparison year over year kind of deal on some of those things. I think to me that'd be very interesting. I like to see continuous improvement and I guess that's to me the way to show that.
Mr. Maher, you had another question?
Yeah, I was going to ask, as you look at the data and you look at number of students who could have attended, do you look at percentage wise of how many students for, for each individual school attends? For instance, if school A has 80 students that could benefit, but only 20 showed up. Or have a school that has 60 that could benefit, 55 showed up. I think that a greater emphasis might be able to be put upon those schools that aren't fulfilling the seats, quite frankly.
Yeah, sure. We could, we could absolutely make sure that we include that by school.
Yeah, and I don't need to know that information. That's for you to know and take care of, but.
Trustee Makashi.
Yes, thank you. I've been waiting patiently for my turn. First and foremost, wanted to also applaud the hard work with the, all the programs that took place over the summer, especially, you know, highlighting the increase in the pass rate with ingenuity and, and student success rate. I think that's huge. You know, obviously lessons learned or what other factors. I think that's really important to celebrate, especially when we think about some of the challenges our students have had with COVID and other barriers that they would have had to overcome. So I would like to applaud the success there. I do have a couple of questions and then one comment. Question on extended school year, you made a point to talk about how it's not focusing on specific I E P goals. Is that specific for this year or is that in general for the extended school program? And can you clarify the rationale for, you know, just having a reinforcement on skills and, and why it's not focusing on students' I E P goals?
I can talk about this one. So extended school year does focus on I E P goals, but it doesn't focus on progressing on new I E P goals. So the idea, a student is eligible for extended school year if it can be shown in the I E P team when they have their I E P meeting that a student, due to a prolonged interruption in services or school, would regress on some goals. So let's say in May, a student has hit their goals, but we know based off historical data that over the course of the summer, they're going to regress on those goals to an unreasonable degree. They'd be eligible for E S Y that way. There's also one other clause in there that says that if, if that hasn't been the case, but a student is at a really critical phase in learning a specific skill or goal, that a long-term interruption in services would cause some unreasonable regression on that goal, then E S Y would also be appropriate. So during extended school year, we're not trying to work on any new goals or anything like that. But we are essentially just trying to maintain progress on current goals.
Great, great clarification. And then for E S Y, was that staffed by special education teachers or combination of staff or how, how was that staffed?
Yeah, that was, that was staffed by special education teachers. And we had support staff, but sped, sped teachers.
Okay, perfect. And then those are all my key, key questions except for one little silly one. On the slide for next steps, it talks about open house for a seat. Let's see, where's that slide? For a seat based E S Y? Can you elaborate a little bit about what that means?
Yeah, so in E S Y, we, we talked about E S Y in sort of three ways. And this is a little bit new this school year. We felt the need to sort of expand our vocabulary. So we had some more sort of precise language to talk about E S Y. And so we have three different, three different types of E S Y of extended school year. When we're talking about seat based, that's that sort of traditional self-contained class of students working on goals. And so that's what we're talking about with wanting an open house for, for. Then we have two other types, walk-in I E P services. So a student may have I E P services with a service provider such as a speech language pathologist or occupational therapist or, or something like that. But they aren't in gen ed summer school and they are also not in that seat based E S Y program. So they may come to campus for their service minutes during the week as prescribed in the I E P. Or there is our dual program enrollment. And the sort of traditional example of this would be a student in our counseling enriched program who's accessing our general education courses during summer school, but they may have some I E P services that they're accessing at the same time. So the dual program enrollment part would be the gen ed summer school being one part of that. And then the service that they're accessing through extended school year being the other part. And so the seat based E S Y, that traditional self-contained class is what we'd like to have an open house for.
Okay, thank you. Really appreciate that clarification. And then this is just more of a, a comment to the board. You know, what really stood out to me is, is the data that really speaks to the disproportionate of Latinx and Black students, both, all across the board. You know, I just calculated really quick for middle school and it looked like it was 30, 38 students. Now, I don't know if that was repeat multiple classes, but you know, I, with all the work that we're doing with equity, whether it be, you know, conversations with the equity grading and with our consultant, I, I think this is, you know, a great opportunity to have some conversations, you know, looking at some of those root causes. It, it just really stands out. We really want to help our students be successful and this will be a great opportunity to dig a little deeper on what some of those root causes might be. So just a, an observation. But thank you very much for answering all my questions.
And I'd like to quickly circle back to Sachi's comment. So in relationship to our equity work. So a lot of times people don't think of males as being, you know, there being an equity problem with, with our, our young men and our older, older men. But actually there's a lot of data that, that show our traditional school system doesn't always work well for teenage boys in particular. And so I think that we didn't talk about it last meeting with our equity consultant on Tuesday. But it is something I think that, that we should be talking about in conjunction with every, all the other things that we're going to be working on throughout the year. So thank you for bringing that up. Thank you so much for a great report. Guys did a great job and I look forward to seeing what you've got in store. Oh, Mary Jo, I'm sorry. I didn't see your hand. Go ahead.
No, I just wanted to say quickly that I, I agree with what trustee was saying about looking at the data. And I think this is a great place where we can improve. And I just wanted to say that last year was really hard with COVID and it's amazing how many teachers actually stepped up and did summer school and administrators and support staff. And I just want to say thank you for persevering.
Great, thank you. So we'll look forward to seeing it. I usually, you come back to us already in January for the next summer. So thank you and look forward to that planning process.
Trustee Larson, can I ask for a clarification on one of the data requests? So Sachi, I heard you say that you wanted data on the, the link between Latinx and S E L. E S L, okay. Thank.
All right. Thank you so much Director Pereira. Now we will move on to item number 12D, which is report discussion on the Pleasanton Virtual Academy Independent Study Program for students with I E Ps. Mr. DiLazzo.
Thank you again, President Larson. Before you, item 12D, as you said. And this is also an information only item. So just for some background before I introduce our presenter, Dr. Ken Goken, our Senior Director of Special Education. We wanted to bring this information to the board to inform you of, of options. And this is one of the potential options for a student who has an I E P, an individualized education plan, who is also requested to be an independent study. And our independent study program, we've called our Pleasanton Virtual Academy. And for context, Assembly Bill 130 requires school districts to have an option for parents and students who are requesting to not be in a seat based in-person program, but to have an independent study program. For students with I E Ps, there's an additional step. It's also required that the I E P team meet and discuss a transition to independent study and a placement I E P. And in that I E P is where they can really discuss several options. And this is one of those potential options. So I just want to be really clear with that, that this is not a policy. This is not a requirement as a condition of placement in independent study. This is really an opportunity for I E P teams to discuss potential options. And if there were a disagreement about what F A P is, a free and appropriate public education, and I E P team recommendation with what a parent may, may want, this is one of those opportunities that maybe we can find some common ground. And to prevent, you know, disagreements in the future, but to, to resolve it then through this process. Again, want to just say again, voluntary, it's individualized. And as all of you know, if there is an agreement, both parties need to consent, the school district and the parent. So I wanted to front load that for you and for the community. And then I will now turn it over to Dr. Ken Goken to go over some details regarding this agreement. Dr. Goken.
Yes, good evening Board and Dr. Haglund, and thank you for having me. I appreciate you inviting me. I met with our Virtual Academy site administrators early this evening. And we currently have 22 students on I E Ps that are placed at the Virtual Academy through their I E P team. So that means the I E P teams have determined that the Virtual Academy is F A P, a free and appropriate public education in the change of placement I E P meeting that's required by I D E A or federal law. So a breakdown is 14 of those students have come from a special day class setting and eight have come from a resource and or speech only placement. So for instance, in our S T C students at the secondary level, one has come from a mild to moderate S T C class, one from a counseling and rich class, eight from a moderate to severe S T C class. At the elementary level, two have come from a mild to moderate S T C class and two from a moderate severe S T C class. So that's 14 students with a mild to moderate, moderate to severe dual credentialed special education teacher. Currently there is five at the secondary level from, from a former speech only or R S P placement and three from the elementary level for eight. We have currently recommended and authorized the addition of a point four F T E for a mild to moderate teacher. And we have eight students from an R S P placement who also want to be placed in the Virtual Academy. And those I E P teams will be re-meeting again to see if we can now offer F A P with the addition of the mild to moderate partial F T E. So if all eight of those students, their I E P teams determine that it is F A P, a placement at Virtual Academy, that'll give us 16, which is a point seven F T E of a mild, mild to moderate teacher for case management purposes. So there's 33 total students who have so far applied for placement at Virtual Academy. Only three of those have their I E P teams determined that it's not appropriate placement at Virtual Academy. And those are the only three out of 33 that we potentially be looking at this recommended settlement agreement process. So we have in-person placements, we have Virtual Academy, then we have home hospital instruction. And any student can be placed on home hospital instruction, general ed or special ed, as long as they have a doctor's note explaining the purpose and a reason and need for home hospital instruction along with a beginning date and end date. So that's also an option. But of these three, if the parents want a placement at Virtual Academy, the I E P team has already said that that's not appropriate through the I E P process. And we'd have to come to a mutual agreement. And that's where our law firm has recommended the use of the settlement agreement that I would sign that involves no funds whatsoever and is being done statewide as well as being recommended by the Access Special Education Academy as our Assistant Director went to last Saturday and they came back with the same recommendation. So that's the purpose of the proposed settlement agreement before you tonight.
Questions? Trustee, carry on.
I just had a clarifying question that, that Ken was talking about. Are you saying that you're going to be hiring people so that we could be F A P?
Yes, so we originally authorized one full-time mild to moderate, moderate severe teacher. And that teacher is teaching four periods a day. So one period is for, every day of the week. So one period is for the S T C mild to moderate elementary students. One period is for the mild to moderate secondary students. One period is for the secondary moderate severe students. One period is for the elementary moderate severe students. And then she also has a prep and then a separate period for case management and or tutoring. And the I E P teams have determined that we didn't have the services there to provide F A P for the majority of the resource students in speech only because only eight of six were approved. So we realized that we needed to add resource F T E. So a point four was just authorized. And so those I E P teams of those other eight will go back and now reconsider because we have the staff available. We've also have authorized a pair professional for a full day that will spend time in those two classes proposed by the resource teacher, which would be elementary for one period and secondary for the other period. And then the four periods taught by the moderate severe teacher. So that would raise that to 16, which then is a point seven oh F T E of a case management load of a resource mild to moderate teacher, which is 28 to one in the ed code.
Trustee Maher.
Ken, you said three students did not, did not move.
So out of the 33 totals, total families who have requested a placement at Virtual Academy, their individual I E P teams, and I didn't attend these, but we had their I E P team representatives as well as either the Assistant Director and or someone from Virtual Academy attended. And those I E P teams said that we cannot provide a free and appropriate public education at the Virtual Academy. And so currently, if the parents want to continue that placement, the only option for the district is to do it outside of the I E P process. And so it's been recommended by our law firm that this settlement agreement would allow us to do that outside of the I E P process.
So which, so three have been denied access because of their unique needs? Is that what you're saying?
The I E P teams have determined that we cannot provide appropriate services in that setting. So for instance, they only at the, at the secondary level, they only legally under A B 130, they have to meet once a week with the credential teacher and then have daily contact with the staff member. In the elementary, they require five days a week of, of contact with the credential teacher. But there's a lot of independent learning that goes on. And, and I don't know all the exact details of these three, but the teams felt that those students could not adequately keep up or have their, their educational needs met by the necessity of having to work independently with only one hour a week of services. So that means they would go the entire rest of the week on their own, as well as additional services being provided if they had speech or OT, that would be provided either in person at the site or virtually online. And it is different from distance learning. Many parents thought that Virtual Academy would be just like distance learning, but that law has, has expired, A B 98, so, or Senate Bill 98. So that's expired. So it's not the same as distance learning.
What did those parents decide to do?
They are waiting to go to the alternative dispute resolution process, which is with me. And so that's where I would meet with a family. And so normally I would offer a settlement agreement with the individual families. But what our law firm has recommended is that this template that you have before you, I could adapt to any and all individual families to meet their needs and put that in there. There's also a clause that if they are not happy at the Virtual Academy placement, they could then notify me and within five days they would go back to their original placement without requiring a change in placement I E P. And they would pick up their services as is before going to the Virtual Academy.
Let me get clarification. So you're saying the settlement is that they will give up their F A P?
They will, they will agree that Virtual Academy is not F A P and they cannot file a due process claim against the district for allowing them to, to go to the Virtual Academy. Because yes, the district is saying we cannot provide F A P at the Virtual Academy for their individual students. So if they agree to go there and we agree to let them go there, then they cannot file against the district that that is not F A P at any point later in the future if they're unhappy or feel that the student didn't progress appropriately in the Virtual Academy placement. But if there's a health issue and a doctor's note, we'd always go the home hospital instruction route, which is still open to us. And I would also look at that with the family through the alternative dispute resolution process or A D R.
Does the team look at other alternatives or other types of situ?
Trustee Maher, maybe I can help too. Dr. Goken, if I may. So just as a reminder, as I said earlier, this, there's many variables that go into play when you. when you are in an IEP meeting with a parent. And so I just really want to be clear on that, that we're going to discuss all the different options that we have available to the student. If there's a possibility of, say, modifying that child's program some way to keep them in a seat-based program or a combination of seat-based with independent study, we're going to try our best to offer that child FAP as best possible, given what that IEP states for that student. So I don't want to kind of go to that extreme of, we're denying FAP. That's truly not what this is about. This is about having conversations with the IEP team. The team is there. There are multiple participants in an IEP team meeting, because there are a lot of experts who know the student through observation, through assessment. We have data so that they can make an appropriate recommendation to a parent. If it comes to that point where there's that disagreement, this is one of those options that we can go to, say, like, look, there's a disagreement, here's what we can offer to the student, and it's a conversation. You know, I really don't want to go to the point of, you know, we have to do this in order for your child to go to independent study. That's not the goal, that's not the intent. But in the spirit of transparency, we wanted to present this option to the board and the community, that this possibly could go that way for very rare circumstances. So hopefully, I'm answering your question. I just want to make sure that you know, and the board knows, and the public knows, this is not one of those required things for a student to participate, but a potential option should the IEP team go down that route.
And Mr. Maher, if I could jump in just for a second. The fact of the matter is, is that independent study programs have been around for a long time. They've not been commonly used as services for students with IEPs. And I ran a large program in Southern California, and we did have a special education teacher that did work with a select group of students whose IEP teams agreed that it was right. They also worked with families who chose to exit special ed in order to pursue that service level for their children. And so this is not new. This idea is not a new idea. It's been something that special education families across the state have done, when they believe that that type of an educational environment is really in the best interest of their child.
But AB 130 says they have a right to go this year, correct?
They actually have a right to go to independent study in that that's the only way that the district can provide services to students at home.
Yeah, well, my concern, of course, and Ed and I have talked about this, that when you start dealing with FAP and services and accommodations and everything else, and other things sometimes start going. And I would hate to see us be responsible for amount of money that maybe we could have put into the program.
No, I totally agree. And so one of the questions was about staffing. So if we have the staff to go into an independent study program to serve our students who have those specific needs, that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to build a program that we can serve kids in independent study for our students who are interested. So that's absolutely correct. We're putting our money into the program in order to do so.
Thank you, Ed.
Yep, thank you.
Any other questions on this?
I just have a comment. Yeah, thank you for all the clarifications on what this will be providing, because I think it's important that it is one option of many. And I do know that the district will work with each case to exhaust all options. And I think that's really important to remember. Just a comment, I sit on SELPA, which is a board with special education. And, you know, I think it's important to identify and acknowledge that we do have a special education shortage of, you know, specialists, and that, you know, the district is really working hard to recruit and hire qualified staff. So I appreciate the effort that the district has been doing to work to get additional staff to support, you know, the virtual program for these students. So really good points. So just a comment, thank you.
And I think that this has been a challenge for every school district across the state since the state decided that this would be the only alternative for, if you weren't, did not want your children to be in-person instruction, that they would go the independent study route. And so it's taken a little while for all of the different organizations to get together with the CDE and figure out what's appropriate and how to handle this. And I, for one, am happy to see this agreement come forward, because, again, there are going to be families that say, I want this, and I think it's important for the district to be protected from future litigation in the event that a family is overruling the IEP team's recommendation. So to me, this is one more way, again, to enter into that conversation, to say, here's what we can do, and here are all of our options. But sometimes, at the end of the day, a family makes a choice, and this is a way for us to preserve the parent's choice, but also not leave ourselves open to litigation in the future. So I think it's a good thing. Any other comments or questions? Is there a motion?
This one's not.
Oh, this one's just discussion?
Information.
Oh, I was ready to move on. Okay, seeing no other further discussion, we will move on to item number E, which is a public hearing on our sufficiency of TK-12 textbooks and instructional materials. And I'm not sure who's presenting tonight. Are we going straight to Shay or Director Woodward? Would you like to introduce the item?
Yes, I'll go ahead and introduce, and then we'll go straight to Shay, President Larson. So annually, the board is required to make a determination, which is done through a resolution, that every pupil has sufficient textbooks and instructional materials in some specific subjects. And I will turn it over to Director Galetti, who will provide us with a brief presentation. Director Galetti?
Thank you, Dr. Woodward. Good evening, Dr. Haglund, President Larson, Board of Trustees, and community and cabinet members. Tonight, we are having the public hearing on the sufficiency of textbooks. This is a yearly hearing in which we confirm that all students and classrooms have been provided the core adopted curriculum. We are able to inventory and assign curriculum to both students and classroom teachers through our Destiny Library Management Systems. Principals have confirmed the sufficiency, and at this time, we can move to questions. And if there are no questions, we can move to the public hearing. Thank you.
So the difference, for those of you who are wondering why this is a public hearing and not the other items are public hearings when they're all public, there are specific requirements for a public hearing, there are specific posting requirements and notices that have to be published, which have been done by the district. At this time, you know, just it's a formality. The item has already been opened, but it is a public hearing. I do not have any public comment on the public hearing. So we'll go ahead with board questions, and then we'll conclude the hearing and take a vote. So are there any board questions or comments on this item? All right, then I will close the public hearing, and I'll seek a motion.
I'll make a motion for, to make sure there's sufficient textbooks for the 21-22 school year.
Way to step out.
I'll second it.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve resolution 2021-2022.09, sufficiency of TK-12 textbooks and instructional materials. Trustee Kerian?
Aye.
Makashi?
Aye.
Liani?
Aye.
Maher?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
And Larson, aye. Thank you very much. Next item, F, report discussion and possible action on the agreement with modular building contractor JL Construction for our science building at Hart Middle School. Mr. Sheik Al-Sami?
All right, thank you. Good evening, Board, Staff, and Community. The next four items are related to our Measure I-1 projects and moving those projects forward. So at this time, I'm going to let our executive director, John Chwastik, introduce this item. John?
Thank you, Ahmad. Good evening, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Dr. Haglund, Cabinet, and the community. This is one of the next items that we'll be doing for construction next summer. It's an exciting project at the Hart Middle School. It's the new science classroom buildings. This is the third package of four packages, and we call them Package 1, 2, Increment 1, Package 2, Increment 2, and also Package 3. So in essence, there's really kind of four, but because of reasons for DSA approvals and things like that, we package it this way. In essence, this is the third package, and it is the modular construction for the new science classroom building. It's the actual building. We've already approved, or should I say, the board's already approved, the back parking lot area and the drop-off, which has been recently constructed and going through punch list. They've also approved the site work package for the building. And this is the package where the building is now will go on top of that site work. There will be another package later that is for remodeling the existing science labs and the removal of four of the portable classroom buildings. But to give you a little background on this one too, this is a method of delivery that we always will look at, or should I say, backing up? We always look at different methods of delivery during construction, how to bid the project. There's four basic types. There's the design-bid-build, which is the common, it's the low-bid process. The next is the, it's the design-build, and there's also lease-leaseback. And then there's the multiple-prime. What we're recommending for this project tonight is the lease-leaseback. It's a method that we've used, depending on the type of project. And one of the projects that we've done this on is the Lydixon project, actually. So we do juggle these types of things depending on the projects, and so we are recommending the lease-leaseback. At the beginning of the projects, we always look at the legal requirements, the project scope, the... Darn it. You know I hate when that happens. So we look at a lot of things on that, but in this case, we really felt like the lease-leaseback was a better product for this delivery. And the reason is, there's two steps to this process. One is the pre-construction services, which is here tonight. And then there'll be another section to this, which we'll come back to the board on, which is for the actual construction component of this. So it basically lets one contract with a developer, which is really the contractor, and in this case, we're recommending JLC Construction. And so they will provide drawings, dovetailing off of the drawings that SFA, the architect, has already done, and that's the design work. And so they'll put the technical drawings together. They'll go through DSA, and that will finish up their scope of the pre-construction services of what we're presenting tonight. At that time, we'll have another, the contractor will bid not to exceed price or a guaranteed maximum price, and then we'll come back to the board with that price for the actual construction of the project. And again, this is for completion of the project at the end of the summer, or at least the construction of the project. Let's see, so a little bit of other history, July 9th this year, we had an RFP go out. Two respondents responded. JLC or JL Construction was the apparent low bidder, but not just the low bidder, it's best product, and it's the most qualified contractor. We contacted both the contractors, we verified their level of commitment and the different types of services that they'd be performing, and we're recommending that JL Construction is the best overall value to complete the work for the district. Once the board approval of this project, we'll issue a notice to proceed to the contract, and we'll get into the pre-construction services. Also, part of this process in the lease-leaseback, the state requires us to have a resolution. And so you'll see that as part of the package, and hopefully, you've had time to review that. But that's a standard procedure that we would have to do with this. And then we will, let's see, the project cost for the pre-construction services for JLC is $146,000. And so the recommended action is, the administration recommends to the board to approve the lease-leaseback contract for JL Construction for pre-construction services for the new modular science labs at Hart Middle School. And I welcome any conversation or question and answers, and I've also got Eric Van Pelt here to assist in any question or answers, if you should have any.
So I'm the one who asked you to go over the lease-leaseback again for the public, because it's a new school year, and we have brand-new parents who are listening, and they don't necessarily, like some of us, are all up on construction project lingo. So what does lease-leaseback mean?
Well, it's a legal term. And you're actually leasing, it's a way that is a legal process that has been developed. And it kind of sounds funny, but you're basically leasing the site to the contractor, and then they lease back the facilities to the district after it's constructed. Different terms of leasing can take place once the project is constructed. And so in the whole process of legal negotiation, the package gets created, which is the overall lease-leaseback project. And why don't I add, why don't I ask Eric also to elaborate on that a little more, if you've got any other info?
Yeah, so good evening, Board of Trustees, and public, and cabinet, and superintendent Haglund. So just to elaborate a little bit on what John was saying, essentially, what happens is the mechanism is a lease of the ground, the site of the school, is performed to the developer, and then the developer then performs an upgrade to that area. Then they lease it back for the remainder of the term of the initial lease to the district, so the district can use it after that area is upgraded. Then, once that lease turns out, the property falls back to the district as the owner, and then the lease term is over. The advantage to this is, it allows a pre-construction agreement, like we talked about, and we need that for modular construction, because the design is taken to a certain level, and then it's completed by the modular contractor, who we're proposing as JLC. And it also allows us to select best value. As John mentioned, and as is mentioned in the board item, best value doesn't force us to take the low bidder. It allows us to look at their product, their body of work, and their qualifications. And that's important in the modular construction, because we're not only picking the person who's going to build our building, we're also picking the person who's going to finish our design. So we want to make sure that we get the right product for the district. So like John said, we sat down at the beginning, we mapped this out with legal, what the best strategy was to deliver this project. Ahmad, John, myself, we sat down, we reviewed the different options. And this lease-leaseback method allowed the selection of the product, it allowed us to comply with the law, and it allowed the best value selection and not forcing us to take the low bidder. And we really think we had a good process. We got JL Modular, who is a very reputable contractor, who is also building the buildings at Lydixon, and they're doing an outstanding job on those buildings as well. So that's a little bit of a summary and a little bit of a deeper dive into lease-leaseback.
Thank you, I really appreciate that. Are there questions from the trustees? Trustee Maher?
Is it true that there's less change orders when you do leaseback?
So if you don't, is it true that there's less change orders? There's a different use of change orders, I should say, Trustee Maher. There is a contingency built into the contract that allows for change orders to be billed against that contingency, and that will be part of the presentation when we bring the construction costs back. So it allows us to be a little bit more collaborative on the front end. So hopefully, we reduce some of those change orders, and typically, yes, we do. So yes, I would say it helps cut down on the number of change orders that we have during the project because of that collaboration on the front end. Also, we're doing a modular construction project. These modular contractors build versions, different versions of these buildings all over the state of California. The other, that's another big advantage to using, doing a modular construction contract like this, is these buildings have been built, forms of them have been built all over California, like I said. And hopefully, they've worked out all the kinks and the issues with the buildings that typically lead to change orders on a custom-designed building.
And one thing I'd like to add with this company, they have a unique method of modulation, so to speak. They don't bring the building out whole in sections like very many modular buildings do, or companies. They bring it out in flats, in panels. And so what it does is it allows a little more designability within these. And so what it does is it allows a little more designability within these, these packages that they can propose. And so they actually fit as a modular manufacturer, in our case, a, a little better to fit our needs.
Great, thank you, John. Any other questions? Trustee Makashi?
Just a comment, just thank you for the, the huge amount of research and investigation and the work that you've done to do the, the proper work to, to get the best deal, so to speak, in layman's term. You know, I'm super excited about this project for our youth and, and hands-on learning through science, and I, I cannot, it really, even though you've gone through very comprehensive technical information, I'm very, very excited about this project and really applaud the huge amount of effort that you've been working with your team to, to get the best deal for the district. So just, just a comment to thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and I see no other comments. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll move approval of resolution 2021-2022.10.
I'll second it.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution 2021-2022.10 on the agreement with the modular building contractor JL Construction authorizing the superintendent or is designated to enter into the contract. Trustee Kerian?
Aye.
Makashi?
Aye.
Bayani?
Aye.
Maher?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
And Larson, aye. Thank you, and I appreciate the, the explanations tonight, John.
You're welcome. Thank you, Eric.
All right. Item G, also construction. This is one-time delegation of authority for the superintendent to enter into a lease amendment with Robert Bothman.
Okay, unless Ahmad has something to say, I'll just take it. This is a time-sensitive item. The next board meeting is three weeks away, and so we're always looking at the most time-efficient way to try to deliver our products. And so that's why we're coming to the board requesting a delegation of authority for the superintendent to enter into the agreement, and so it gives us a little more time to negotiate with the contractor. It's, the contractor is already on-site, they're doing the site work at Lydixon, and JLC, or JLM, they have two companies, is the building manufacturer. So it's a similar process we're doing on Lydixon as we're doing on, on Hark as well. But, let's see, the, the reason we want to negotiate with the contractor a little more is they've got some higher costs in some areas that we would like to try to negotiate down or find a better way to reduce the prices somewhat. And with the Van Pelt team, they do phenomenal work trying to get the best value for the buck. And so we would like to let them do more magic in this, and, and therefore the delegation of authority. This is the seventh planned amendment for the, and it is the final amendment for Bothman at the Lydixon project, which is exciting, because now we know what the overall cost to the project will be, at least barring on any strong unforeseen circumstances. The project scope in this package is for the site work of Building G, which happens to be the library and the support spaces, and then also the administration building. And the JL M company has already bid that portion anyway, actually some time ago. The completion of the playground is also included, and, which includes a striping and campus landscaping. There's a bunch of utility relocations for some of the added buildings that has gone on in this process, or in this project. Shade structures for the new playground are also included. And so there's been, this project overall has kind of been a moving target in a lot of ways. But again, the Van Pelt group has really done a great job trying to streamline it into less phases than it was originally planned for. And so to date, there has been approximately $2 million in savings through the value engineering from the original plans that we had, when our team came onboard. And so the project is trending on budget, and the requested amount of this delegation of authority shall not exceed $5,650,000. So when we come back to the board with the ratification, it will very likely be under that value. But for this action tonight, it's requesting the board to approve this delegation of authority for Amendment 7 with Robert A. Bothman. And if you have any questions, again, Eric and I are here for your question, for your answers.
I do not see any questions, comments? Trustee Miller, you look like you're ready to go. You've got your finger on the pulse. It sounds like a lot of money, I just want to say, as an amendment. So, but I mean, it's, it's really great, thank you so much for the value engineering. We really like to hear that the projects are brought in under budget and, and still contain the things that our staff has been looking for, and the, and the, we're super excited for Lydixon to like, oh, we're getting so close, right? So with that, if there's no questions or comments, is there a motion?
Yes, that's what I was getting ready to do.
That's what I thought.
I'll move approval of Amendment 7 for Robert A. Bothman Construction at Lydixon.
Second?
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve Item G, which is the one, one-time delegation of authority for the superintendent to enter into lease amendment number seven with Robert A. Bothman Construction for the Lydixon rebuild. Trustee Kerian?
Aye.
Makashi?
Aye.
Bayani?
Aye.
Maher?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
And Larson, aye. Great. Item H, this one's also very exciting. Report discussion and possible action on the purchase of the new furniture for the new science classrooms at Amador and Foothill. Mr. Trossing?
Okay, tonight, this is another time-sensitive item for the purchase of the furniture, and this is at Amador and Foothill. And I also have with us, for any answers that you may have, Debbie Capadona with Meteor Education, they're the furniture consultant that we've had, and also Brian Winner, I think, Brian W., I'll call him. And so we're here to answer any questions once I'm done with the explanation. So the process of selecting furniture included the administration from both sides, from both sites, department heads, teachers, administrators, principals, the facilities and construction team, and of course, the furniture vendor. And these meetings were all well-attended by site staff, and after the kickoff meeting, there were nine meetings held between the various members of the group. Now this, these meetings ranged from an entire group with a kickoff meeting for both projects. Then it got down to the individual departments for specific needs such as special ed, or science, or engineering. And then many teachers had very detailed visions of the classroom layouts and contexts, and contents. Between the two schools, there was a little bit of difference of opinion, but a lot was general consensus. And so also, I, I want to mention, too, we do have the principal, Josh Butterfield, here, too, to answer any questions, to also elaborate on the process and, and how it worked out with his staff as well. Let's see, each high school has different types of classrooms. The Foothill High School has seven classrooms and two rooms for storage and science prep. The classrooms are for engineering, computer science, and science classrooms. And then Amador has 12 classrooms, two of which are science prep rooms, or should I say, in addition to classroom, or two science prep areas were included as well. And then the classrooms are for general ed, special ed, SDC, and science. And let's see, storage was also accommodated between the two schools. We have a variety of different storage within the classrooms. Different classrooms have different storage needs, and so what we found is in the computer engineering courses, there was very little casework because so much of it was electronic. And this is coming from the educators, and so, but at the same time, where the computer science labs are in Foothill, there's also a dedicated, large storage area for student and staff usage for projects that they're doing, in addition to storage for, for everything in those, those buildings. At the Amador site, the, there's a few differences between, from Foothill, one of which it has five general ed classrooms, and then it also has two special needs classrooms for the special ed. And so it has support spaces, an office, a changing area, bathrooms, a kitchenette area, washer dryer, things like that. And so that's why there are a different level of tailored furniture packages for each of those spaces. So, and I can also let Debbie, and then after I'm done with this, kind of elaborate just a little more on this, in terms of what her input was and what she saw as well. So in fact, this is a good transition point. Debbie, why don't I let you talk about your experience, and then we'll let Josh Butterfield chime in as well.
Thank you, John. Good evening, and thank you for having us here to answer your questions tonight. I wanted to say that we have done very extensive work with your teachers and your staff, and with your facilities department, and everyone has really stepped up to the plate, so that's been quite great to see in the community. We have had multiple meetings, as John mentioned, where we have presented our layouts to the educators, and part of our team is also Brian Wimmer that John mentioned. He is our educator on the team, so Brian comes with an education background, there's Brian as well. So we're coming at this from an educational standpoint, not just a what does it look like in the classroom standpoint. So we've presented our drawings back to the teachers and discussed the educational intent in the classroom, and how the furniture is a tool to achieve the goals that the district has. And then we have taken their feedback and added or subtracted, or just offered different solutions. In some cases, the teachers asked for more storage, for example, and we provided more storage on the second go-around, or the third go-around. We worked closely with the SDC teachers and, for the special needs rooms, to make sure that we provided soft spots for the students, a place for them to feel comfortable. And if you look in the, the package that's attached, the document to the agenda, you'll see those items that are included there. And then one of the other things that we've done is stick with their district, district standards that we set in place when we first did work with the district at Lydixon, and through the pilot program at Lydixon. So all of those district standards that have been put in place still are continued to be used, but just of course sized for the high schools. Some of the colors change for each site, but still have most of the same colors that are being used across the district. John, is there anything else you'd like me to elaborate on, or have Brian mention?
I can't think of anything. Brian, did you want to chime in on, on something quick?
No, I think, well, I guess I think the one big thing is just, yeah, we really took in the, the teacher's voice into consideration as we were working on these spaces, looking at what the student experience was going to be in the room, and I think the, there's a lot of variety to best meet the needs of both sides. So I think the, the computer labs are a great way to sort of exemplify that, is you see the difference between the more station-based classroom and then the more flexible, independent classroom with the, the stations on the wall. So we really wanted to look at meeting the needs of the different programs that the sites offered, and let Josh elaborate more on, on that.
Yeah, Josh, why don't you chime in this time?
Sure. Hey, good evening, everybody. So over at Amador Valley, as we went through the design process, I want to thank John and Debbie and her team, and Eric Van Pelt for all the support. We had multiple meetings at Amador alone with the different unique staff that were going to occupy each of the space to make sure that the needs were met for our students as we prepared to move into this building. Our staff are extremely excited, especially about our mod to severe SDC room, giving those students a proper space to learn life skills and focus on their, their goals while in their time at Amador. So we felt very supported along the way. Each space is, is really unique, from our science rooms that are going to be occupied by our physics team, to talking about, you know, weight-bearing places to, to show off their science experiments, having movable lab stations for everybody, the computer science rooms, our teachers were able to really look at kind of 21st century workspaces in the computer science industry and try to mirror their classroom design around, you know, what a Google workspace might look like, for example. And then, of course, the modernization and furniture in the, in the, in the standard classrooms are a huge upgrade from where we're at right now. So I know our teams of teachers are really excited about their opportunity to engage in the process, and helps build some excitement as they get ready to relocate into this new building.
Great, thank you very much. Are there questions from the trustees? Trustee Kerian?
Actually, if I could add?
Oh, one more thing?
One more thing. Sebastian Bull from, from Foothill just joined us, too, and I'd like to have him chime in.
I guess he was watching, and he just, he just had to call in.
I, I guess so, but I didn't, I was logging on, so I missed the question, so I apologize.
Well, we don't have any formal questions, other than your experience with the process of how we designed and selected the furniture, got your staff in, and who was the player, who were the players in the staff, and maybe some unique input that they had, especially some last-minute changes?
Perfect, yeah, no problem, John. Yeah, we met multiple times with the, with John and the team, and the furniture company, and had a lot of conversations with the various teachers, the computer science teacher, engineering teacher, and biomedical science teachers, to discuss what was needed in the various spaces for our classroom building. And we went through the process, they shared some different things seen at different schools. The, the team really, the teaching team really shared what they were looking for in terms of an open concept space, a lot of flexible movement of things, and it was a pretty valuable conversation. Then we met again as a follow-up to share some of the adjustments that were made and some ideas. And then I think we met a third time, and then, of course, as John mentioned, there were some changes that came later on, which was based on teacher input to have a little more flexible spaces, especially in the computer science classrooms, because they were going to be more fixed. But then we have one fixed space and one more flexible space for our computer science classrooms. So we had, it was about four or five different teachers as part of the conversation, and John, myself, and other members of the, the team to look through all the processes.
Great, thank you. We do, we do have a question from the trustees, John. Mary Jo, go ahead.
So I just want to say thank you, I really appreciate the fact that you worked really hard on this and that teachers have their input, and I'm just wondering, do students have a chance at all to weigh their opinions?
I will speak for Foothill, we didn't have students in the meetings themselves with the, with the furniture company and so on, but I know that the teachers, engineering teachers, biomedical science teachers, they are always talking about with their students about what the experience is like in their classrooms. So I know they came back and forth quite a bit with the student experience. But again, it wasn't, they weren't there as part of the conversations, but I know that the teachers did talk with them back in their classrooms about what was best for the, the setup for their, their needs.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Trustee Makashi?
Just, this would be the question to the principals. When talking with your teachers, is there any particular type of furniture or new item that will be added into the classrooms that's really standing out, that the teachers are super excited about? I, I know you noted the flexible, flexible seating and options, but anything stand out? I'm just curious, as, as you were kind of sharing the discussions, did anything really stand out that the teachers are, like, can't wait to get their hands on for their students?
Well, I'll, I'll jump in really quick, Mr. Bull. For our site, specifically our mod to severe classroom, our teachers were really excited about that. Just so you have some context, Trustee Makashi, is we have one of our SDC classrooms that's located in a portable right now, and then the other one that is in a standard classroom. These are life skill-based classes. So the fact that they can do hands-on cooking demonstrations, work with students on life skills, and also have spaces that are pretty unique, furniture setups for those classrooms, and, and safe environments for kids, washers and dryers, access to a private bathroom that, to support students with their changing needs. Our, our SDC program is, is very excited about the opportunities that the space is going to provide them.
I can attest that, because when I was at Amador years ago, the same classroom was in the portable, and there's been a, a goal or dream for years, so it's exciting to see this happen for the Amador students and staff there. In terms of Foothill, one thing that jumps out to me is In terms of at Foothill, one thing that jumps out to me is in the engineering classrooms, I, I know that we were excited about this idea, but there's these, these tabletops that you can lift up the side, that it kind of keeps it sort of enclosed. So when you're building, you know, robotic things, the things don't fall off. If you've ever been building with robotic things, things fall off the side, little nuts and bolts. So keep it all enclosed on the table. And those are, can be also be folded down so that you can use it as a normal table as well, which is something we don't have. And that's exciting for the idea of, of thinking about how you can build and capture those things without losing parts all over the place. That's just one thing that jumps to my mind. But the whole idea of the flexible furniture and some of the, the more interactive spaces that are found in the, in the design are pretty exciting to see for our students to be able to access.
Thank you. I really appreciate you elaborating. I, I still will never forget my son's fifth grade teacher that got rid of some of the furniture and got a couch in there. So dealing with space, and I, I know that the environment can speak volumes for, you know, how our students are learning. And it, it can really have an impact on concentration and flexibility and, you know, the, the modality of just how students learn. So can't wait to see it in person at some point. And I really appreciate the visuals that were provided in, in the packet to give context for what it could look like. So thank you.
So I just have a quick comment. This looks super exciting. I was looking at all the furniture. It looks very interesting. I'm sure all the students are going to have a lot of fun. And I can't even like imagine to see how many students are going to like benefit from this. It's going to be like thousands over the years. It's just to think like that one building is going to have such a big impact on the school. It's just mind-boggling to me.
All right, I see no other questions or comments. We're all super excited about it. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of new furniture for Foothill and Amador High School, new classroom building projects, portable replacements.
I'll second it.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the purchase of new furniture for the Foothill High School and Amador High School, new school, new classroom building projects, portable replacement. Trustee Kerian?
Aye.
Makashi?
Aye.
Bayani?
Aye.
Maher?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Larson, aye.
It's been a while since, I was just thinking about the, the classroom modular for the students at, at Amador. For a while, we were, there were invitations to come have lunch there and be, and there was a whole menu service process and getting to know the students there. It was, it was really great. I, I, it's been a while since that's happened, or at least that I've been aware of that's happened. So maybe in the future, that's something that can be considered as a part of the kickoff of the new building.
All right, number I, also John Chausstick. Report discussion of possible action on the agreement with HKIT Architects for the electrical switchgear replacement at Foothill.
Okay, thank you. This is a, a project that is absolutely necessary. It is the main switchgear for, it's the main power source for the Foothill High School. It's been deteriorating for some time. It actually was identified in the needs assessments in the prior bond, or should I say the prior master planning efforts? And, but it wasn't funded. And so, but for us to do what we need to do with these projects, we've experienced that they're, they're just having problems. And, and so we're recommending the replacement of it because parts aren't available for the most part anymore, and it's just failing. So we had it evaluated, and that was the recommendation, and we, we agree with it as well. The, let's see. We selected HKIT because they're already very familiar with the site. They're working on the new building. They've got some HVAC stuff that's in there in the admin building. They've got the off-site improvements or, or onsite improvements, the fencing project. And so just keeping it was a logical step to offer them to promote a fee on that as well. So let's see. This, the idea of the replacement of the switchgear was presented to the facilities, the facilities committee. And their general agreement was, or consensus was to include the work into the project. And so the cost of the switchgear, which is going to be fairly sizable, it's in the hundreds of thousands, and hopefully it won't go to a million, but it's quite sizable. And it can be funded through savings on the project. We have a little bit of savings on the two-story classrooms at both Amador and Foothill. But also, we may have to tap into the program contingency. And that would be the first tie, tapping into the contingency. But we're midway through the bond, and we need to start spending that on selected projects that are, are high in need. So this is why we're recommending this project to move forward. Let's see. And the construction phase of the project will be brought back to the board once it's designed, and then we start getting prices for it. And then actually it bids out. So the administration recommends that the board approve the agreement for HKIT Architects for the electrical switchgear replacement for Foothill High School.
And just to be clear, this is not for the replacement. This is for the design work to plan the replacement.
Correct. It's the first step to design for the replacement of the, of the.
Yes. Yes, just to be clear. So any questions from the trustees? I just really wanted to make sure I, I, I sent this question in ahead of time that this is an allowable expense under measure I-1, since it wasn't specifically called out in the bond?
That is correct. It, it allows for electrical upgrades, safety features, and probably the best is renovate, replace, upgrade, acquire, install, or integrate major site building utility systems, equipment, or related infrastructure. And it goes on and on, and it also says, including electrical, switchgear, and related infrastructure for modern technology. So there's much more to it, but those are the words, the highlights that we would pinpoint from that.
Thank you. Trustee Kerian?
So John, can you explain a little bit? When you said we have to spend the contingency, can you explain what that means?
Okay. The, the, the measure I-1 has its overall $270 million. That gets earmarked for each individual project. And then each project will have a project contingency. For example, the new classroom buildings at both the high schools, there's a project contingency in there. So if there's anything that's unforeseen, we can tie into that. That does not tie into the program contingency. The program contingency is used for when a project or projects exceed the amount that they've been allocated in their budgets. And not only that, as you go through the program, you want to start choosing product, projects that best fulfill the measure I-1 scope of work. And so as you get closer to the end of the bond, we will want to expend 100% of that amount on projects that would fulfill, better fulfill the bond. We're looking at various things like energy efficiencies, water conservation, additional HVAC, some air conditioning at the gyms at the high school and the middle schools. So there's a lot of things we're still looking at, but we haven't come to the board to request that yet. But that's, these are types of scopes of work, including the switchgear, that we would bring forward to the board to come for approval.
I would just ask, as someone who is intimately involved in measure I-1, that when you're coming forward with additional things to add into those, that it be a little bit more comprehensive? For example, you mentioned some things that would fall into the category, which was very important to us, about investments in systems and things that would relieve pressure on the general fund, for example. So energy efficiency obviously would, would fall into that for sure. But I'd rather see a little bit more holistic approach than things coming to the board, one-offs, without us seeing a whole picture of some of the ideas that you're considering. So.
And speaking?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, John.
And, and speaking of that, Eric and I were just discussing that today. In the spring of, or early spring, we will be bringing back to the board holistically a package of projects that we are looking at. I mean, it's, Ahmad has been talking about it to us regularly. So we're, we will be presenting to the board a selected list of projects.
Great, I look forward to that. Yes, and the facility committee, of course. Any other questions or comments?
No, just thank you, President Larson, for bringing that point up, especially, you know, big picture for newer community members, people who may not be as familiar with I, I-1 bond items. So thank you, great, great idea.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement with HKIT Architects for the electrical switchgear replacement at Foothill High School.
And I'll second the motion.
Great. It's been moved and seconded to approve item I, which is the agreement with HKIT Architects for the switchgear replacement at Foothill High School. Trustee Kerian?
Aye.
Makashi?
Aye.
Bayani?
Aye.
Maher?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Larson, aye. Great. And last item tonight on our agenda is report discussion of possible action on the one-time delegation of authority for the superintendent to enter into a contract for the facilities, what, district-wide facilities master plan update. John, I believe this is also you.
John, I'm going to, can I add a few words before you start on this one?
Absolutely.
Great, thank you. So, you know, the, the district, every three or five days needs to be updating its facility master plan. It's a, it's a best practice. And we're at that point where the measure I-1 project is, you know, into kind of either completing or in the process of completing all its major projects. And we're at the point where we can start looking at our, you know, contingency and bringing those scopes of work that we want to add to it. So it's a great time for us to kind of step back and look at updating our facility master plan. And we started this discussion and work with the facility committee several months ago. And through that process, we, we did an extensive RFP, we did a process to look at all, you know, available consultants out there and architects to do that. And so this has been a very, a long process, is a critical process, and that will holistically, interactively, and collaboratively with the community and our schools and our teachers, look at our facilities, and come up with that next set of projects that we need to do. And, and, you know, the last studies showed the district had, you know, close to, you know, 800 million to a billion dollars' worth of needs. And we want to be able to refine it and prioritize it with these consult, with the consultant that we're going to choose here. So with that just background, John, I'll let you kind of run through this process and our recommendation.
Thank you, Ahmad. And for the question and answer period as well, we have Eric to chime in if there's anything that he wants to discuss as well. The RFP process was issued, and we had 12 responses, which is a good sizable amount of, of firms that were highly qualified. And so a paper screening is the next step, and it was performed. And we had four firms that we pulled it down to. And so they're listed in the agenda, and so they were invited to interview. And on September 8th, those four firms were interviewed by a well-attended panel within the district. It had principals from elementary, middle, and high school. It had directors, assistant superintendents, the superintendent, and one board member. And as I say that, I should have said the board member first and the superintendent second. But that's me. So it was well-attended. And then from that part, we had two firms that rose to the top. And then we wanted to have another interview with them, which we did hold on November, or excuse me, September 16th. And that had Dr. Haglund, Ahmad, myself, and Eric Van Pelt. And so in this process, both those firms were very well represented, and they did very well. And either of the firms could move forward. But we are in our selection process. Our next steps are to negotiate with those firms. And we'd like to have the delegation of authority for the superintendent to enter into the agreement, just to give us a little more time. And again, we have three more weeks until the next board meeting, which is one extra week. And so we want to try to keep this in a timely process. Let's see. In the process of the whole master plan, once we start, start setting up the meetings, we'll keep the board regularly informed of the progress. We are also going to have a coordination between the city's effort of the boundary, or excuse me, of their housing element update, along with our boundary adjustment process. And so it's going to be a collaborative effort amongst everybody, the community and, and all. And so one of the firms that were interviewed, the two finalists, one had higher characteristics and higher experience and services in the community outreach area, which was very desirable. And they also had setting up a website and also their way of doing town hall meetings and things like that. And that was very impressive. So what we will plan on doing is coming back to the board with the recommended firm and their, their relative fees as well. But our recommendation, the administration recommends to the board for this one-time delegation of authority for the superintendent to enter into a contract with a successful firm for the facilities master plan update for a cost not to exceed $390,000. And we're welcome for, for any questions that you have.
John, I just wanted to make sure that, yeah, it's added that the, that that will be not funded through our general fund, nor through measure I-1. It will be funded through our developer fees, which is allowed for these type of studies. And so just to want to make sure that, that's clear to the community.
Thank you.
Thank you. I was just going to add that myself. Questions from the trustees? Well, I'm looking forward to it, having been through the last facilities master plan process. It's definitely a time when you really get to know what the needs and what your teachers are thinking and your administrators and what the students are looking for. And it's also an opportunity to make adjustments in how you're going to be delivering services to students moving forward. So I look forward to that. If there are no questions, I would seek a motion to, of Jay.
I'll move approval of giving a one-time delegation of authority for our superintendent to enter into contract with, for the district-wide facility master plan update.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed $390,000.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to give the superintendent delegation authority to enter into the contract for the district-wide facilities master plan update not to exceed $390,000. Trustee Kerian?
Aye.
Makashi?
Aye.
Bayani?
Aye.
Maher?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Larson, aye. Thank you. That is all of our action items tonight. John is off for the evening now. We'll move on to item number 13, which is board reports and requests. Trustee Kerian?
Hi, Steve and I went to two meetings. One of them was the city of Pleasanton, and, and we talked about the MOUs for the SROs. And we will be bringing that next Thursday. We have a joint meeting with the city of Pleasanton. And then Steve and I also went to a facilities subcommittee. And one of the things that I was really loved was that drone that you guys had. They had a great, great drone that showed the way for parents to get in and out of the school. I think it was Heart, right? It was amazing. I would love that to be at all the schools, because it was just a great visual. And then I'm happy to report that I got to visit some schools. It was my favoritist part of being a board member. I got to see Alisal and Horizon, the babies are so cute, Steam and Village. And I absolutely loved it, and everybody was working so very hard. And I just want to say thank you for your hard work.
Trustee Maher?
Yeah, one other item that trustee Karen and I witnessed, I guess you would say, the city informed us that they are quickly moving towards voting by district or area for council members. And I think they have a very short window. And they've, correct me, Dave, if I'm wrong, they've been sued by an attorney, or going to be?
They've, they've been issued the letter that we referenced back in our conversation.
So we are next.
Just a clarification. I'd had, I had a request from the Pleasanton Weekly. The school district was unaware that the city had received a letter when we started this process. So this was not, our, our conversation was not prompted by. this process, so this was not, our conversation was not prompted by the city receiving the letter from the attorney. We did not know that until last week, so just to clarify that.
Yes, school personnel just kind of went.
Yeah, would have been nice to know, just FYI. Anyone else?
Just a quick, last week, boy, time flies, we had our first Joint Valley Regional Occupation Program meeting of this school year, and two key things out of that. One is the, they presented the unaudited actuels, and so, you know, very fiscally sound. It's a great program, it's an amazing program, and it's also, like, our district run very well fiscally, so that's a good thing. The other thing is, they sort of did a visioning for the next 50 years, which is like, wow, 50 years. Some of us board members will certainly not be here. So, but anyway, it was kind of fun to be able to give some ideas of where to take it. I mean, my main point was that, you know, even with all the automation happening and lots of jobs, you know, going to different jobs and going away and everything, there's still going to be need for a lot of the things that ROP specializes in, you know, the programs that can't automate and everything, and so, I just, you know, only see that being more important going forward.
Great, trustee Makashi?
So, yeah, I just wanted to report out, I attended the self-aboard of trustees meeting this week, special education local plan area. It includes several districts, for example, Dublin, Livermore, Sunol, and of course, Pleasanton. I just wanted to kind of celebrate and give, you know, celebration to the hard work of the collaboration amongst the districts. You know, there were some budgetary items discussed in that meeting, but it was really interesting, there was a conversation about student information management systems, and there was a really thoughtful discussion about the comparisons of the pros and cons of a couple different types of these programs, and, you know, each district can kind of share the pluses and minuses of each, and, you know, that's the type of collaboration that, you know, I think just a tribute to the hard work and dedication, you know, with our special education, of course, Edie Olazo was there, and Ken as well, and, you know, all the districts kind of sharing. I think it was really good to hear, because there were some struggles that districts are challenging, and sharing ideas, and, you know, feeling some harder positions to fill, you know, for example, psychologists or speech pathologists, high in demand, so anyway, just wanted to share, it was a very productive meeting.
Great, thank you. So, as was mentioned, next Thursday, the 30th, is our joint meeting with the Pleasanton City Council. This is a meeting that traditionally happens in the spring, but due to the pandemic has been, had been rescheduled. It will be here in our boardroom. And then, our next regular board meeting takes place on October 14th, and there will be some changes, that look for some communication coming forward. The law is changing about public comment and open meetings, so just watch for that information. We will be having some changes to our procedures for, beginning in October. All right, then, we do have to adjourn to closed session, but there will not be not, there will not be anything to report out after that. So, with that, I'll say goodnight, everyone.